Go back to. And go back to the gate. Now, we're already an hour late. Had to go back to the gate. Offload her, get her luggage, because you could be bombed on. And then we went back. And so I missed the Stan RTA.
Yeah.
Which is okay.
Yeah. Oh, no. Well, it looks like they're making changes to their route, so they want.
They are.
There, so they're gonna, we're meeting with them next week.
Right. They have a. It is next week. We have to scout all the. Local socialists.
Community meeting.
I mean, it is a community meeting, but they had it specifically. Okay, Norman, am I ready?
The vacation's gonna get real.
Oh, yes, it is, yeah. And Mayor, I don't see Brad. So.
We'll delay it.
Mine's off. I don't think it's your mic, Mayor. It's offering. Mine's off.
Glad you guys approved that last.
Yeah, what they're doing is making sure that we keep it.
Now, there's only two of us logged on to Zoom.
Rachel's is on. I'm gonna turn mine on. Okay. There you go. No?
Mine says X.
Am I good to go? Good evening. The City of Riverbank, City Council, LRA Board meetings are now in session. Today is Tuesday, June 28, 2022. It is 6:02 PM. Please stand.
Our flag is the flag of the United States of America and being a republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray. Father God, we just come before you this evening. Lord, we're so grateful and thankful for our city of Riverbank, the city of action. God, I thank you for this great council that is before us tonight. Lord, I pray for protection and health and prosperity over each one of them, all their needs being met. And Lord, all the great residents that make up Riverbank, Lord, the same that you would protect them, God, that you would bring health to them and prosperity as well. Lord, we're so grateful for this opportunity tonight to come into these chambers and, Lord, be able to discuss business. And, Lord, for us that are living here, God, an opportunity to share concerns and ideas. And that, Lord, as the council weighs what is brought before them, Lord, I pray that wisdom and what is best for Riverbank will be the outcome. God, I thank you that when it's all said and done, Lord, as a community, that we would be in unity and one accord, making this place the best place to live in California. In Jesus' name, amen.
Please be seated. I'm going to backtrack, and this meeting will be held in accordance with the California Government Code Section 54, 59453 subdivision echo of the Ralph and Brown Act, California Government Code 54950 at SEC, the federal Americans with disabilities. While this meeting is being physically open to the public, given the state of emergency regarding the threat of COVID-19, members of the public may also participate and comment via the Zoom virtual platform. Refer to the last page of the agenda or participation information. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Uribe?
Here.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Here.
Vice Mayor Campbell?
Here.
Councilmember Barbara Martinez?
Mayor O'Brien?
Here. There will be some changes to the agenda. For item 10-1, the general plan amendment will be pulled. And again, item 11.2, a resolution approving the final map of Countryside 3 will be pulled. We, when we get to those items, members of the public are able to comment on those, but we will not talk about it. Conflict of interest, any council or authority member has a direct conflict of interest is declared at this time. Seeing none? Oh, yes, we do. Darn it. And so do I. Okay, item 7-1, which is a presentation, we're gonna hold that until the presenter gets here. Might as well have someone that's knowledgeable on it. So at that time, this time, we'll go to public comment. This time, members of the public may comment on any item not appearing on the agenda within the subject matter jurisdiction of the City Council LRA Board. Individual comments will limited to maximum three minutes. Time cannot be yielded to another person under state law. Matters presented during the public comment period cannot be discussed or acted upon. For the public in Zoom, your procedures are on the last page for public comment procedure. Public comment, please.
Good evening, council members. My name is Jamie Agers. I'm at 7730 McKinley Avenue, Modesto, California. That's within the unincorporated area of Santa Fe County, but is within the proposed Riverwalk development, which had a notice of preparation that came out exactly 12 months ago in June of 2021. We've owned, my husband and I have owned property there for nearly 40 years. A similar project was proposed by a groupie developer from Stockton. Several years ago, we were opposed to that project, and we're opposed to this one, largely because this is prime farmland, prime ag land. Right now, it's planted in beautiful corn, probably as tall as I am, and you can see the corn as far as your eyes can see. And the concern is that homes should be developed on soils of lesser quality, not prime ag land. So we urge you to vote no on this project when it likely will come before you. Thank you.
So my name is Karen Canrato. I live on Hoag Road. I'm here to let you know that I oppose the proposed Riverwalk without housing development. For all the reasons everyone has listed before, they're valid and I'll repeat them. Prime agricultural land, highly fertile and productive, water, including the aquifer, all those concerns, the infrastructure, sewage, fire, police sheriff, ambulance, traffic, roads, streetlights, et cetera. It's on a flood plain. It will be built on, the homes will be built on a flood plain as well as businesses. And then the issues of annexation and eminent domain is my concern. I see with you to consider carefully all the pros and cons and to vote no in opposition to this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments here? Are there any public comments in the Zoom world? Seeing none? I'll bring it back. I'm gonna go on to the consent calendar. Consent calendar consisting of item 9-1 wave readings, item 9-2, approval of June 14, 2022, City Council Local Redevelopment Authority Board minutes, item 9-3, adopt the resolution authorizing the city to implement teleconference public meetings pursuant to Assembly Bill 361, allowing the city to continue the hybrid virtual meeting environment. Item 9-4, approve a correction to Appendix Alpha of the memorandum of understanding between the City of Riverbank and the Northern California District Council of Laborers and its affiliate Construction, Production, and Maintenance Laborers Local Union AFLCIO number 1130 to correct reflect employee pay scales effective 1 July 2022, and authorize city manager or human resources analyst to make corrections. Corrections consist of replacing current version of Appendix Alpha with an updated version of Appendix Alpha to correct reflected employees' pay scale. Is there anyone wishing to pull any item or anyone from the public wishing to comment on any item? Seeing none, bring it back to the council.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar as stated.
I'll second it.
We have a motion to approve, and a second roll call, please.
Councilmember Uribe?
Yes.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Barbara Martinez?
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Item 10-1, the one we pulled, is a general plan amendment 01-2021 and rezoned 02-2021. Is there anyone wishing from the public to comment on this item?
My name's Mary Rosales, and I live on 3255 Austin Avenue, and it's directly in the middle of that complex you want to build. My concern is that I live in a one-story home. I don't know if this is gonna be a two-story or, but, but my feeling is this is more of a commercial thing, having housing for seniors. And I know, I lived in Escalon, and most of the senior complexes are always like in a corner of a neighborhood close to a hospital. Well, there's no hospital around here because of ambulances, right? And we're gonna get that traffic ambulance. And to me, I feel that our neighborhood is a family neighborhood with kids that are out there playing. Now, if someone, and I'm a senior, but if someone ever gets hurt in that complex or something happens, we're gonna have ambulances going through there. And to me, I, that's the reason why I moved into this neighborhood, was because of family reasons. So I extremely oppose having that facility built right behind me. I know it's been vacant for a long time and, but I just assumed that they would build, you know, residential, family, single homes there. But, because they are building on Savage Avenue up front, they're building homes there. But that landscape, to me, I personally feel that it's a commercial project that you're trying to build in there. And I completely oppose it because I live right behind there. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to comment on this item? Seeing none, ma'am, we're gonna continue this to another date. Okay? We'll move on. Public hearing notices, let's see, is this all we're gonna do in one?
So, Mayor, we will have one presentation for items 10.2 through 10.5 and 10.7 and 10.8. But because they are public hearings, you're going to need to have individual opening of the items with the public hearing.
So you do the public, you do the presentation. I'll open it up for each one as we go through.
So the items before you tonight is the second step with regards to the landscape and lighting assessments that are adopted every year and that are assessed to homeowners on an annual basis. So the landscape and lighting districts are formed pursuant to the Landscape and Lighting Act of 1972. The annual assessments cover the cost of the landscape maintenance, street lighting, capital improvements, as well as parks. District budgets are reviewed annually, and those are presented to the City Council for consideration at the June 14 meeting. And tonight, the public hearing is with regards to the actual levy and assessment of those fees onto our residents. So we have a variety of landscape and lighting districts. The first is our consolidated district, which includes a variety of areas within town, including Sterling Ridge, Teonti Estates, Elmwood Estates, South Bend, Courtney Estates, and Eastwood Estates. And you'll notice there are three areas that we are proposing increases for, with the largest occurring within Sterling Ridge, which is a $4 increase over the past fiscal year. Ridgewood Place has an annual assessment, which will also increase by $4.41 for the upcoming fiscal year. And this is the annual fee that's increasing by that dollar amount. It is not a monthly fee. River Cove is not having any fee that is currently projected, so the $196.90 is what will be assessed to homeowners. Sierra Vista Estates will be increasing from $42.03 to $44.97, which is a $2.94 increase. And so our recommendation with regards to our landscape and lighting districts tonight for items 10.2 through 10.5, for each of these four individual landscape and lighting districts, is to approve the resolution which authorizes the levy and collection of the annual assessments. I'm available for any questions.
Are there any questions before we go for a public hearing? Seeing none? For item 10.2, two resolutions for Consolidated Landscaping and Lighting District to one amend and/or approve the engineer's report and the levy and collection of annual assessments related thereto for fiscal year 2022, 2023, and ordering the levy and collection of annual assessments for fiscal year 2022, 2023. This is a public hearing? Is there anyone from the public wishing to make a comment or statement? Anyone from the Zoom wishing to make a comment or a statement? I need an answer on that one.
There's no one on Zoom who's wishing to comment.
Thank you. I close public hearing, bring it back to the council for consideration.
I'll make a motion. We approve item 10.2.
And I'll second it.
Motion to approve item 10.2, and a second roll call.
Councilmember Uribe?
Yes.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Barbara Martinez?
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Item 10.3, two resolutions for Ridgewood Place Landscaping and Lighting District to one amend or approve the engineer's report and the levy and collection of annual assessments related thereto for fiscal year 2022, 2023, and to ordering the levy and collection of annual assessments for fiscal year 2022, 2023. This is a public hearing? And wishing to make a public statement? Is there anyone on Zoom wishing to make a public statement?
There's no one on Zoom wishing to make a statement.
Okay, I closed the public hearing. I bring it back to the council for consideration on item 10.3.
I make a motion that we accept item 10.3 as so stated.
I second.
Motion to approve, and a second on item 10.3. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Uribe?
Yes.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Barbara Martinez?
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Item 10.4, two resolutions for River Cove Landscaping and Lighting District Number 1, to one, and/or approve the engineer's report and levy of collection of annual assessments related thereto for fiscal year 2022, 2023, and to ordering the levy and collection of the annual assessment for fiscal year 2022, 2023. This is a public hearing. I open public comment. Anyone on Zoom wishing to make a public comment?
No, there is not, Mayor.
Seeing no public comment, I close public hearing and bring it back to the council for consideration.
I'll make a motion to approve item 10.4.
I second.
We have a motion to approve item 10.4, and a second roll call, please.
Councilmember Uribe?
Yes.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Barbara Martinez?
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Item 10.5, two resolutions for Sierra Vista State Landscaping and Lighting District. One, to approve the engineer's report and levy the collection of annual assessment related thereto for fiscal year 2022, 2023, and ordering the levy and collection of annual assessments for fiscal year 2022, 2023. This is a public hearing? Is there anyone on Zoom wishing to make a public statement?
No, there is not, Mayor.
No public statement. I close it, close the public hearing and bring it back to the council for consideration.
I'll make a motion to approve item 10.5.
I'll second it.
I'll second it.
We have a motion to approve, and a second on item 10.5.
Councilmember Uribe?
Yes.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Barbara Martinez?
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Is this where we step out? Okay, at this time, we're gonna turn the gavel over to the vice mayor, and I accuse myself of the dire.
Me too.
Okay, item 10.6. I'll read it. Two resolutions for Crossroads Landscaping and Lighting District to one amend and/or approve the engineer's report and the levy and collection of annual assessments related therefore for fiscal year 2022, 2023, and ordering, and number two, ordering the levy and collection of annual assessments for fiscal year 2022, 2023. Is there any questions from the, well, actually, is Catherine gonna do a presentation?
I'll be handling the presentation at this time, Vice Mayor. So Vice Mayor and Council, this is with regards to the Crossroads Landscape and Lighting District. You'll notice that Crossroads has a district benefit that's associated with it, which means that it is assessed to all residents within the Crossroads Landscape and Lighting District, and mainly focuses on the landscaping that of, that is sort of the medians along West Gate, as well as our parks. And then we have individual zone districts, which actually focus on the lighting and the landscaping within those specific zones. So the district benefit, we do have an increase of $8.12. Both Zone 1 and Zone 2 will have no change to the assessment that was charged last year. Zone 3 has no assessment at this point in time, and Zone 4 will increase by $4.19. Available for any questions you may have.
Okay. I'm gonna bring it back to the council for questions or comments. No questions? I'm gonna open it up. It's a public hearing on this item. Members of the public have an opportunity to provide public comment. Are there any questions?
There are no comments from Zoom.
Okay, thank you. There are no comments. I close the public hearing and bring it back to the council for additional questions for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve item 10.6.
And I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. So it's time for a vote.
Councilmember Uribe?
Yes.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Campbell?
Yes.
Motion passes 3-0.
Thank you.
Now for 10.?
Items 10.7 and 10.8 are with regards to our storm drain basin districts. And so I'll be providing the staff a presentation for both items. So these storm drain districts cover the maintenance and operations of our storm drain facilities within those two districts that we have. And as with our landscape and lighting districts, the budgets are reviewed annually. So our Heartland Storm Drain District, we will see an increase of $1.88 from the prior fiscal year. Here is the map that reflects the area that is actually assessing this fee. And then our Sterling Ridge Storm Drain District will increase by $3.91 in the upcoming fiscal year. And this is the map that's associated with that assessment. And so the recommendation tonight is to approve the resolution that will allow for the levy and collection of the annual assessment.
Thank you. Item 10.7, resolution of the City Council of the City of Riverbank, County of Santa Fe, State of California, ordering the levy and collection of assessments within the Riverbank Storm Drain Benefit Assessment District Number 2006-01, Heartland, for fiscal year 2022. This is a public hearing. I opened it up for public comment. Do we have any on Zoom?
No, you do not, Mayor.
Seeing no public comment, I close the comment. Bring it back for consideration.
I'll make a motion. We approve item 10.7.
I'll second it.
We have a motion to approve item 10.7, and a second.
Councilmember Uribe?
Yes.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Barbara Martinez?
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you. Item 10.8, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Riverbank, County of Santa Fe, State of California, ordering the levy and collection of assessments within the Sterling Ridge Benefit Assessment District for fiscal year 2022, 2023. I open for, I open the public hearing? For anyone on Zoom?
No, there is not, Mayor.
Thank you. I close the public hearing. Bring it back to the council for consideration.
I'll make a motion on item 10.8. It's associated that we accept it.
I'll second it.
We have a motion to approve, and a second on item 10.8.
Councilmember Uribe?
Yes.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Barbara Martinez?
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Okay, item 10.9, a resolution adopting the fiscal year 2022, 2023 annual operating budget.
Mayor and City Council members, tonight we have for you a presentation regarding the fiscal year 2023, 2022, 2023 annual operating budget. At our last meeting, we did present an overview of the major funds. Today, you'll hear a little bit about all of the other city funds, including housing, system development fees, as well as the other operating funds for our sewer and water systems. So Tammy El Cantor, our Assistant Finance Director, will be providing the presentation on this item.
Good evening. Thank you. So as the city manager indicated, tonight is a overview presentation of our funds. General fund, special revenue fund, our system development fee fund, housing fund, sewer enterprise fund, and the water enterprise fund. There are numerous funds that fall within these categories, so that detail was provided with the agenda, and staff will be available to answer any additional questions that this, this presentation may not cover, that you might have on the details. So the first item that we're gonna cover is our general fund. And our general fund this year is projected to have a deficit of $455,000, but that deficit includes some one-time capital improvement projects. So that includes the pool replastering and a few other items. So that includes the pool replastering and a few other items that we have in a later presentation. And we're still maintaining our thirty-two percent in a reserve, which is well above what our requirement is of the thirteen to fifteen percent. And then for our budgeted revenues, this year, we are projecting a ten percent increase, which is largely within our sales tax. That's a fifteen percent increase that we're projecting in the sales tax, and then a four percent in our property tax. And then this is based on, you know, past year's revenues, where our progressions have been going in our revenues, and they are done conservatively. Here is an overview of how our General Fund revenues have did over the last few years. And you can see that there's been steady increases within them. Even though the pandemic, we were able to manage that. So revenue indicators on our property tax, the State Board of Equalization has authorized for the county to do a two percent maximum or increase, which is the maximum that is allowed. Our new housing development is underway in both our East and West Riverbank Countryside and Parkwood. And then other revenue sources would include our building permits, which are driven from some of those developments and our VLO property tax swap, which was projected with just a small increase of one percent. So we've had consistent growth year over year. We are anticipating a thirty-six percent growth this next fiscal year. And just to keep in mind that our top twenty-five sales tax generators are almost seventy-seven percent of our sales tax. Our expenditures over the fiscal year 21-22 compared to 2022-23 does have a twelve point five percent change. And that, and once again, that does include some of those one time expenditures for capital projects. And then we'll go over, here's the overview of the expenses. Our primary expense in General Fund is our law enforcement. And then our salaries and benefits are right close behind there. So our anticipated expenditure changes are primarily in staffing costs. We do have a thirteen percent increase, which is based on negotiated cost of living adjustments, and increase to cost of benefits, which includes the CalPERS, our health, and workers' comp. We do have new personnel that have been budgeted in this budget, and that is driven by some of our growth, which includes a building inspector. We are taking a part-time development service clerk to a full-time community development clerk, and then adding a senior parks maintenance worker. Law enforcement contract includes a school resource officer position, which would be partly funded by the school district. And this, this is still being negotiated. So the official contract for that would come back to the City Council for your approval. So just so you know, we are putting it in the budget, but you guys still have a say in that. Negotiated COLIS for the law enforcement contract, and then we are using three hundred thousand from our public benefit fund to offset some of that law enforcement contract. So here is our one-time expenditures for capital outlay. We have budgeting software, which is meant to enhance, streamline the budget process, the pool replastering, the community center gazebo, a track loader for storm drains, and then museum carpet replacements. And then just future items that we need to keep in mind and know that will be coming up for us. The ARPA funding, we will be getting our round two funding. The first one, the first round of funding was pretty much allocated primarily to the energy efficient program. We have allocated some of the second round funding for hazard pay, but we will be coming back to the council for direction to where we're going to put the rest of those proceeds. Our unfunded state mandates continue through solid waste SB thirteen eighty-three and stormwater MS four requirements. And we will have labor negotiations for the 2023, for, we will begin the labor negotiations for mid-management group in 2022 to be effective at the beginning of 2023. And continued gas tax fund subsidy, you know, of course, with rising costs, maintenance continues to be outsourcing the revenue that we are getting from gas tax, so it is subsidized by the General Fund. Future recession, with our inflation at an all-time high, mortgage rates continuing to grow, and the average home prices are at four hundred and eighty-seven thousand and rental rates at eighteen hundred, we know that we have to keep in mind that there could be the potential for a future recession, or just keep in mind about the rising costs, right? I mean, we all know, we all know what gas, or gas prices are doing right now. So our special revenue funds. These funds are legally restricted to be spent on specific areas or projects. So example would be the gas tax fund, which is to be spent for street maintenance or street capital projects. This would also include our sidewalk, curb and gutter work. And then we have our vehicle tow fund and grants, police tow fund collected for towed vehicles for traffic enforcement, and our public benefit fund, which is our cannabis revenues and expenditures. So for all of our specialty funds, we have a beginning reserve of almost eight point four million. And of that eight point four million, it does include our second round of ARPA in there. Our, well, I'm sorry, at the beginning reserve, it doesn't include it in the revenues. It does include it. And then we have our expenditures, so we actually have a surplus in our special revenue funds this year. Some of our revenue funds do, our special revenue funds are designated to operate on a structural deficit. And that primarily means that, for example, in gas tax, we may collect money for a couple of years to save up for a bigger, bigger project that would be done in the future. So our next set of funds is our system development fee funds. These, again, are legally restricted to be spent on projects identified in the approved system development fee program. These fees are paid by new development, residential and commercial. And the funding for infrastructure is related to new development. These can't be used to mitigate any current infrastructure needs. It is primarily needs that are driven from the development. So some of our projects this year in, in streets is our continued Roselle and Patterson traffic signal, and then the Oakdale Road improvements from the MID Canal to Northern Lee Limits of Crossroad West Unit One. System development fees has a beginning reserve balance of six point eight million. We have estimated revenues of almost four million. And this year, we only have expenditures of one point four million. So we actually have a surplus, leaving us an ending balance of nine point four million. Housing funds. So housing funds account for all current outstanding loans to residents for the first-time home buyers program and the housing rehabilitation program. Loan repayments must be, be used to provide future loans, so we're constantly reinvesting back into our community. Loan terms typically are thirty-year deferred loans for first-time home buyers. And the city continues to participate in the Santa Claus Urban County Consortium for CDBG and home funding effective for fiscal year twenty-two-23. And our beginning reserves in these funds is four point one million. We're estimated to get repayment of about eighty-four thousand and have expenditures, or we're hoping to give loans of one point seven million, leaving a ending reserve of two point five. And while that is a big reserve, we still want to keep in mind that we want, we want to reinvest that money back in our community. It's not meant that we want to hold on to it, but that we want to reinvest that back into our community. And of course, with the housing market as it is now, we know because of interest rates being high and higher home sales, higher cost for the home sales, it is difficult for those first-time home buyers.
I also do want to mention that the ending reserve does include the two million dollar grant that we received via the assistance of Senator Eggman. We will see a proposal for the expenditure of those funds, most likely in August. We'll be looking to use the funding in order to construct a transitional housing program on a newly purchased property on Jackson.
Thank you. Okay, so next, we're on to our sewer enterprise funds. Legally restricted to be spent on sewer-related operating expenses and projects. Revenues are paid by all city customers, residential, commercial, industrial, and new development. There are different types of funds, our operating fund, our debt service, capital improvement, and connection fund. Our debt service fund covers loans that we may have taken out, for example, the Schneider, and then potentially our energy efficient loan will be through there too. Our capital improvement fund is meant, is established by the City Council, and the money that we collect from residents on our bimonthly bills, there's a certain portion that goes to the capital improvement fund to continue the maintenance of our systems. And then the sewer connection fund, that's paid by new development. So if there's somebody new that's connecting to the system, they have to basically buy into our system for the infrastructure that's already there. So the sewer fund overview, we receive ninety-seven percent of our revenues from user fees, three percent increase in revenues due to consumption billing for commercial customers. And then we also have, again, proposed staffing additions, a maintenance worker one, and an operator in training. Again, this feeds from our development with the need for the additional staffing. So the capital outlay that we have outlined for sewer is two list station upgrades for Roselle and Candlewood, the back jet combo truck, which was recommended by the council to put into this year's budget with our, at our workshop. And then the Roselle sewer force main upgrade. Now, this project is complete, and developers have paid for that. They will be seeking some reimbursement for that. So here are all of our sewer enterprise funds. They begin with a nine million reserve balance, six million in revenues, just slightly more than six million in expenditures. And so we have a slight deficit of seventy-eight thousand, but we end with a reserve of eight point nine million. So we'll move on to our water enterprise. Again, these are restricted to water-related items. And the revenues, again, are paid by all our customers, residential, commercial, industrial, any new development, our water operating fund, capital improvement fund, and connection fund. Operating fund for basic maintenance and running of the system. Capital improvement fund, again, is fed through our rates. A portion goes towards the capital improvement. And then the connection fund, again, is your new development that are paying into the system. Three percent increase in revenues due to consumption billing, a rate study project. Expenses continue to be funded. Our water conservation order in effect may cause decreases in revenues. And again, we're asking for two maintenance workers in the water fund with the additional development, additional water lines, and additional work that those bring with them. So for capital outlay and the water enterprise funds, we do have water line replacements that were included in the rate study project. So those are in the, the budget for twenty-two-23, and they include Santa Fe from eighth to Fourth, Fourth Street, Sierra Alley from third to eighth, and Topeka Alley from first to Canary Site. In our water enterprise funds, we have a beginning balance, a reserve of eight point four million. We have estimated revenues of four point two, and estimated expenditures of four point four, with a structural deficit of two hundred and ninety-four thousand. But we have an ending reserve of eight point one. That deficit includes those capital improvements in there. So that is our annual budget. This is an overall of what the city is for all of the funds. We have beginning reserves of forty-one point six million, revenues of thirty-six million, expenditures of thirty-five, with an ending reserve of forty-two point five million. So we actually have a surplus of almost nine hundred thousand in all citywide funds. I am available, or City Manager Maricello is available for any questions that you might have.
Okay, questions? I have some, but I'll wait. Any questions? I just have basically comments, questions on, I've asked this several times on MS fours. How do we get the entire city involved in stormwater?
So in order to do so, we would be required to basically go through the same processes we do when establishing the CFD. Is you go through, you build your project list, you build your operating costs. You have an official engineer's report that's prepared, which then sort of dictates what your rate method and apportionment is to all of the residents and sets the fee. You then go through a proposition to eighteen process, as our residents would have the opportunity to protest that fee. Should you receive less than fifty percent plus one protest, then the City Council would have the ability to enact the fee.
But the MS four is federally mandated.
Correct, but the implementation of fees that are property-related are all governed by Proposition twenty, uh, two eighteen.
But the stormwater is not property-related. It is pollution control-related throughout the city.
Correct, but our assessment to the residents is property-specific. And so that's why we would have to follow Prop two eighteen regulations.
Can we explore that, possibly make it an assessment fee like we do with water?
That could be a possibility, but we would still go through the same process as we would any other rate study that we normally perform.
But one of the things that we are not charging for yet, which you haven't stated, was the sewer replacement fund, plant replacement fund. Are we collecting that yet?
No, so currently, we're undergoing the rate study as part of the regional recycled water project. So that'll be brought forward to the City Council for consideration at a later date and time.
That's only on new projects?
Uh, no, we're actually looking at the connection fee as well as future rates. But for the future rates for current customers. Correct.
Okay, so that will be in?
So, so they, so the rate study would take into consideration current customers and what their portion of that would be, and would change the sewer rates that are currently charged.
Because no one in the city built that sewer.
Correct.
It was provided through funding from the federal government. Not only the funding for it, then the upgrades to it, up through nineteen ninety, I believe.
Right.
So, okay. All right. Well, this is a public hearing. I'm opening this up for a public hearing. Is there anyone wishing to comment on these items? Anyone in the Zoom world wishing to comment?
No, there is not mayor.
Oh, come on up, you have to, we have to capture what you say.
I go down Roselle, and that street is horrible. So is, you know, going into Modesto?
Mm-hmm.
Um, is that part of the project that's going to be funded to repair those roads?
Um, there's not a current project in this next year's budget for Roselle. We have a CIT project list, and there could be something on there, but I don't know right offhand, sorry.
Yes, and our, our portion of Roselle ends at Clarabelle. So anything past Clarabelle is actually county property.
And with the North County Quarter coming in, the improvements from where the North County Quarter crosses near Plainview?
Oh, okay.
To the city will be improved drastically, including bike lanes, pedestrian.
So that street of Roselle would be Santa Claus County, Modesto area.
Correct.
Correct.
So we get a hold of it.
I was just curious, because I do drive that road, and it's horrible, and I noticed that cars, um, tend to avoid those puddles, and everything goes bump, and there was an accident there not too long ago, and that was my concern, because I drive that road every day. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any further public comment? Do you want to bring it back to the council for consideration?
I'll make a motion to approve item 10.10.
I'll second it.
We have a motion to approve and a second on the...
Yep, sorry, apologize. It was, uh, 10.9.
10.9 fiscal year 2022, 2023 annual operating budget.
Thank you, sir.
Councilmember Uribe?
Yes.
Member Hernandez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Barba Martinez?
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Item 1010, which we were almost going to vote on, is a resolution adopting the proposed fiscal year 2022, 2023 Local Redevelopment Authority, LRA, board budget. And Melissa?
Melissa Holdaway, our administrative analyst at the local redevelopment agency, will be providing the staff report on this item.
Good evening, Mayor and Authority members. Can I bring you the fiscal year 2223 local redevelopment proposed budget? Okay? Okay. So I wanted to start off with a few key assumptions for this budget year, because there has been some changes now that we have a master developer agreement executed, and they have taken over all the site revenue and expenditures, but in lieu of that, we receive an annual payment from them, uh, for the next 10 years. So that will be accounted for in the budget this year. Um, ESCA number two work, uh, is hopefully going to be completed by fiscal year end. We're hoping, uh, with the new modification that we're negotiating right now, that that work will, uh, continue and that we will be done as well, and hopefully be in line with the conveyance estimated to be completed in this next fiscal year by April of 2023. I think the Army has given us an estimated timeline for that. Um, the OLDCC grant, that was the former Office of Economic Adjustment Grant, and that will be providing funding to the agency through June 2023 or until conveyance, so we've accounted for that as well. Anticipated budget impact, the site revenue and expenditures of transfer to the master developer, the ESCA is being completed, and the transfer of the Riverbank Army Ammunition Plant to the city. Wanted to go over the budget funds as well, um, Fund 197, leasehold revenue, we're continuing to keep that fund open for the annual payment from the master developer, as well as, uh, paying for the administrative costs and match that we do have to, um, complete for the, our, our portion of the grant. They, we do get a 90% grant, and then a 10% match from our funds. Fund 199, the Environmental Services Cooperative Agreement, this fund covers personnel and administrative costs associated with the project, and the contracts associated with remediation project and disposal. So that, the remaining funds, uh, that we have are going to be covering our, our contractors for the remaining work that's out there. So the LRA proposed budget overview, our estimated revenues are 1.1 million, with estimated expenditures of 791,000, and the balance of funds will cover the LRA structural deficit of 316,000, but we may have, uh, some expenses that will come through at mid-year, depleting that for the electrical, uh, high voltage electrical consultants, because we have some high voltage electrical, uh, transformers that need some work done, and it is a requirement from the EPA that we get that done. So what's left in the ESCA? Well, we have the final report, we have additional surface soil sampling, concrete sampling, disposal of the remaining presses, and then we have a best management practices that was agreed upon with the EPA. For the next two years, um, we do cleaning of the superstructure, and so that is going to be included in this modification. So the recommendation tonight is to have the LRA Board adopt a resolution approving the LRA proposed fiscal year 2022, 23 budget. Any questions or comments?
Do we have any questions or comments? Okay. This is a public hearing, any public input, comment? Zoom land?
I don't see any comments on Zoom.
All right, I bring this back to the council for consideration.
I'll make a motion, we approve item 10.10. And I'll second it.
A motion to approve and a second on item 10.10. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Uribe?
Yes.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Barbara Martinez?
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Item 1111, new business, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Riverbank, California, approving a subdivision improvement agreement for Countryside 3 with McRoy Wilbur Communities, and authorizing the city manager to execute the agreement.
Just Donna Kinney, Planning and Building Manager for the city, will be providing the staff report on this item.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, we don't usually do a PowerPoint for subdivision improvement agreements, so I'll, uh, make this brief. Um, basically, when a developer wants to build houses, he has a tentative map that gets approved by the planning commission. He's got two years to apply then for a final map, and during this time, we worked with them on a subdivision improvement agreement that spells out the responsibilities, um, and obligations of both the city and the developer. Um, we use a standard agreement, and it is tailored a little bit to the specific, um, subdivision, depending on if they have to put in a park, or how many feet of street, so they, they are a little bit different. This one has, um, some added information, which is kind of new. Uh, the developer has requested that we require him to use underground transformers in the subdivision. Uh, they're more expensive, uh, PG&E doesn't like, doesn't like to put them in, but the subdivision, the sub divider found that while a lot of these transformers are 18 months to two years out, in getting them ordered and brought to the subdivision, the undergrounded ones, that are more expensive, um, are only 30 days out, so they can really get moving on these subdivisions once these transformers come in. But PG&E wants the ci, will only do it if the city requires it. So he's asking that we require him to put these underground, um, um, items in, and so, um, we do have that, that sentence, and they're requiring him to underground those transformers. Um, let's see, don't have, uh, any other, um, specific information to share on this, but it is required that they have an approved subdivision improvement agreement before they can get, uh, their final map. So we ask that you, um, or we recommend that you approve this subdivision improvement agreement, so the final map can move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions of, um, Donna Kinney?
I have a question. Uh, PG&E is advertising on TV that they're trying to put everything underground, so I don't quite understand why they want to not do the same thing with the, you know, gener, uh, other things.
Transformers?
Transformers, uh, especially if it's cheaper, it doesn't make sense to me, since that seems to be their goal, so I'm just kind of concerned about that.
Well, they're a little more expensive, I think about $6,000 or so per transformer, more expensive, and then there's a little bit more maintenance for PG&E when they're underground, so they don't like to do it.
But they're safer for the public.
It's safer, and I think aesthetically more pleasing.
No other questions, comments? Okay, I'll open it to the public for questions, comments? Do we have anyone on Zoom?
No, we do not.
Okay, bring it back to the council for consideration.
I'll make a motion that we accept item 11.1 as so stated.
I'll second it.
We have a motion to approve and a second on item 11.1. A roll call, please.
Councilmember Uribe?
Yes.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Barbara Martinez?
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Item 11.2, we have pulled, is a resolution approving final map, 02TAC 2022 Countryside 3, APN 062 dash 022 dash 020. Since we're pulling it, anyone from the public can comment on this before we move on? Anyone on Zoom?
No, there is not.
All right, we move on to item 11.3, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Riverbank, California, to approve a subdivision improvement agreement for Crossroads West Unit 2 with DMG Development LP, and authorizing the city manager to execute the agreement.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, this item is very similar to the one I just presented, only it's on the west side of the city, and for those who don't know, Unit 2 is at the southwest corner of Oakdale Road and Westgate Drive, formerly known as Crawford, and, um, very similar, like I said, to the last item, um, it is a standard agreement, it's been modified a little bit to, uh, reflect what this developer is required to do and the city is required to do. Um, they also would like to move forward with the final map, and, um, so we recommend that you, uh, take a moment and, um, approve this subdivision improvement agreement. Be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions? Any questions from the public? Any questions from Zoom?
No, there are not.
I'll bring it back for consideration.
Make a motion, we approve item 11.3.
I'll second. We have a motion to approve and a second on item 11.3. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Yes.
Councilmember Uribe?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
We're halfway through. 11.4, a resolution approving the final map of DMG Development LP and Crossroads West Unit 2, APN 074 dash 010 dash 006.
Hey, I do have a PowerPoint for this one, I'll make it quick. Thank you, Norma. Okay, so this project is a pro, um, just under, or just a little over 19 acres, most of the lots, which are 160 single-family units, most are at the southwest corner, like I mentioned, but there are a few that are adjacent to Unit 1, um, on the north side of Westgate. Um, it's also, uh, they will be also constructing associated street, water, sewer, park, and storm drainage improvements, and this works out to about 8.24 dwelling units per gross acre. Uh, project approval so far, um, the planning commission in 2019 approved the large lot tentative map and PDP plan, I was going to do this, the PDP, the preliminary development plan for the Machado Party, which is the property owners for the residential area of Crossroads West. Um, the next month, council approved the ordinance, which approved the development agreement for this project. And then in, um, uh, September of last year, Development Services reviewed, uh, the tentative map and approved Resolution 2021 001 for that tentative map, and that was all per the, um, Crossroads West specific plan, it did not have to go to Planning Commission. Here's an aerial view of the site, as I mentioned, there was a little, a few of the lots are above, uh, Westgate Drive, which runs east and west on this aerial view. Now, this is what the tentative map looks like, it has, um, a park in the center of it, and I believe it may be called Centennial Park. Uh, this is what the final map looks like, it substantially conforms to the tentative map. The project was analyzed under the Crossroads West Specific Plan EIR, and is consistent with that. And we recommend you approve the final map by resolution, based on the required findings, that the map conforms to the provisions of subdivision law and city code. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions? This is a public meeting, is there any public comment on 11.4? Anyone from Zoom?
Uh, no, there is not.
Bring it back for consideration of 11.4.
I'll make a motion that we accept the item 11.4 as so stated.
I'll second it.
We have a motion to approve and a second on item 11.4. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Uribe?
Yes.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Barbara Martinez?
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you. Item 11.5, a resolution expressing support for St. Francis of Rome Church Harm Reduction Program. You get all the funds, though.
You had a lot in a row. Thought about bringing a bar stool.
Well, true.
Thank you, Norma. As you know, I brought a similar item to this to you just a, a few weeks back. Oops, there we go. Um, just as a quick reminder, what is harm reduction? It creates space to empower an individual to identify their priorities, potential risks, and tools to reduce harm associated with drug use. We talked about the different principles of, of harm reduction, how you accept for better or for worse that drug use does exist. We understand it's a complex, multifaceted phenomenon. It establishes quality of individual and community life and well-being. It calls for non-judgmental, non-coercive persuasion. It ensures that people who use drugs and those with a history of drug use have a real voice. It affirms people who use drugs themselves as primary agents of reducing the harms of their drug use, and seeks to empower, to, to share information and support each other. Recognizes the realities of poverty class, racism, and social is, isolation, past trauma, discrimination, and other factors that affect people's vulnerability to, and capacity for using and, and effectively dealing with drug use. Does not attempt to minimize, or ignore, the real and tragic harm and danger that can be associated with drug use. We talked about Narcan, we talked about syringes, safe injection equipment that would be, um, provided through St. Francis of Rome, um, they have a program, or would like to have a program, and there was, uh, two ways to go about getting this program. One is to apply directly to the state, which gives a lot of hoops to jump through. The second is if you get, um, the local government to, um, to support you, um, it's a lot less, um, less things for the church to have to go through in order to provide this program among their other social-based programs. We talked about harm reduction, um, the closest being in Stockton. And so, at that time, when I came and spoke with you, my understanding was that if we just had minutes from the meeting, or we had an email from, uh, the mayor, that that would show support for the program. But when we started talking to the powers that be within these harm reduction, um, services, uh, they really wanted a resolution saying that we support Father, uh, Messial and St. Francis of Rome in pursuing this harm reduction program. Uh, so that's why I brought it back to you again today, and there is a resolution that I'm hoping that you'll consider, and, um, approves to show your support for, uh, the church and its program. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments?
I'll just make a quick comment, um, so I was lucky enough to attend the first harm reduction event, the little pilot, uh, event with Diego and, uh, some of the members that, uh, like Selma and Laurie, um, and it was very well-received, a lot of the people that came through were very appreciative, right? And we've already said as a council, we don't condone drug use at all, but we, we are realistic that it's happening, and if we don't... And if we don't do it, we're going to continue to see needles in the parks and other places in the city. So this is a way to, you know, prevent harm to those people so they have time to recover. And so I'm glad to see, you know, it's another hoop we got to go through, but I'm glad to be in supportive, and I'll be moving to approve this one.
Got a question. Will there be another training so that, you know, others can go through it?
I believe so. I know the program is run on volunteers. And so there will always be kind of a changeover of volunteers, additional people wanting to help. And so I believe, yes, it can happen.
Thank you.
Yeah, I have a question. First of all, I agree with Councilmember Uribe either with everything that he said, but I want to clarify, we will approve it, but it will still be funded by the harm society or, you know, for the money that runs the program?
Correct. We are not offering funding. We are supporting them emotionally, mentally. And we, I had brought you an item concerning federal monies coming through lawsuits for opioid prevention, and that we had talked about applying for those funding, those funds, which we did. And when they come in, we have offered to have them, instead of creating our own program here in the city, those funds will go to the county, specifically the opioid safety coalition. And they will use that money to bring supplies and support the harm reduction program at the church.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Are there any questions or comments from the public? Are there any questions or comments from Zoom?
No, there are not.
I bring it back for consideration.
I'll make a motion to approve item eleven point five.
I'll second it.
We have a motion to approve in a second on eleven point five. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Uribe?
Yes.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Barbara Martinez?
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Item eleven six, a resolution approving a master property tax revenue agreement between the City of Riverbank and Santa Claus County, and authorizing the city manager to finalize and execute said agreement. Mayor Estella.
Mayor and council, this has been a very long time coming, and we're very pleased with the collaboration between Santa Claus County and the CEO's office and all of the city mayors and city managers of all nine cities who participated in this process. So really appreciative of everybody's efforts to bring this agreement to fruition. So just to give you a brief overview of our property tax allocation here in the state of California, the current distribution is a result of Proposition thirteen and AB eight. So basically Proposition thirteen allows for a one percent property tax fee that's assessed on all properties. And then AB eight gives some discussion with regards to how that's allocated amongst the counties, the cities, and the special districts. Currently, Santa Claus County receives about twelve percent of the property tax revenue, while the cities, on average, receive five point seven percent. Now, to add more confusion to this whole allocation, we also have an allocation that goes directly to the schools and community colleges. It's known as the Educational Revenue Augmentation Fund, or ERAF for short. ERAF directs a portion of our property taxes for educational funding that the schools and community colleges would have otherwise received from the state's general fund. The city itself, of the revenues that we receive from our property taxes, we're required to allocate twenty-seven point six percent of that towards ERAF, while the county contributes approximately fifty-five percent of their revenue. So when a new, a local government is looking to change the organization, city limits, or annex new property, there's a process that's been established through the Court of Appeals Knox-Hertzberg Act, which would require a fiscal impact analysis and the discussion between the city and the county with regards to the sharing of property tax. Now, that's done in an effort to make sure that there's a continuing level of service that is being funded for the new residents that are within the city and the area that's being annexed. Now, prior to nineteen ninety-six, the city and the county actually shared in the base property tax that's assessed, as well as the tax increment. So what's tax increment? That's the increase in value that's over and above the base year that is established. So the county, prior to nineteen ninety-six, received sixty-six percent of the revenues, and the city received thirty-four percent of the revenue. Now, in nineteen ninety-six, a new agreement was renegotiated, and it was effective as of April of that year. At that point in time, the county retained all the base funding. And then the city and the county shared in the tax increment, or the increased in assessed value from that base. So the city would receive thirty percent of any new annexed areas, and the county would receive seventy percent.
Mayor, reject. At that, you're still looking at ERAF being an additional, above and beyond. What you're looking at is what is left over after ERAF and special districts are paid.
That is correct.
You're actually looking at twenty percent of the tax revenue from property taxes being split, seventy-thirty.
That's correct, Mayor. And I'll have a brief graphical representation of that, just for members of the public.
Okay.
But since execution of that nineteen ninety-six agreement, the city has actually established new, nine new tax rate areas within those annexations that have occurred. And just for the members of the public and their information, tax rate areas represent all of the different areas in town that have individual rates assessed to them. Each area of town may have a different school district, may have a different special district that serves it, such as our East Side Mosquito Abatement District. And so each area has a very specific way in which the property taxes from that area is allocated to all of those special districts, the city and the county included. So this is just a map of all of the colored areas, which are all of the tax rate areas that are in existence since nineteen ninety-six, and that this new agreement will also take into consideration. So it will take into consideration all of these nine tax rate areas that were annexed since nineteen ninety-six, along with the new tax rate areas that have been established within Crossroads West, and any future tax rate areas for any future annexations that the city council may be considering. So I'm going to walk you through the math a little bit. And so, as I mentioned, when it comes to the property tax sharing agreement, we are looking at being able to share in the increments from the base. So for example, if a property was worth ten million dollars last year, and it is worth eleven million dollars this year, we have increments of one million dollars. So basically, the difference. One percent of that, which is what Proposition thirteen allows us to assess property taxes on, is ten thousand dollars. So that's the revenue that we're going to generate from that increment. Now, of that, automatically, schools and special districts receive approximately sixty-eight point eight percent of that in our city. So that's on average. The city then receives only three point eight percent of that, or in our case, about three hundred and seventy-eight dollars of that ten thousand dollars that's generated. And the county receives about twenty-seven point four percent, or about twenty-seven hundred dollars. We then bring the thirty-twenty, the thirty-seventy split. So the county is sharing thirty percent of their revenues with us. So we, they automatically deduct that thirty percent from their allocation, and they provide that to us. So that increases our revenue from three hundred and seventy-eight dollars, in this case, to almost twelve hundred dollars. And then we bring in ERAF. So that's that Educational Revenue Augmentation Fund. The county has to allocate fifty-four point nine percent of their revenues to ERAF, and we have to allocate twenty-seven point six percent of revenues to ERAF. So we deduct about three hundred and thirty dollars from our allocated amount towards ERAF. So at the end of the day, Riverbank ends up with about eight hundred and sixty-nine dollars from a ten thousand dollar assessment, and the county ends up with eight hundred and sixty-four dollars. And you might ask, well, that's almost fifty-fifty, but that's because of the allocation that they have to make towards ERAF, which is almost double the amount that the city is assessed. Now, with the new agreement, we are proposing that, should the city council consider adopting today, that we would actually begin to see the receipt of those new revenues in fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three. Now, I did not include that, neither Tamara or I included that in our current year budget that was adopted tonight, because we wanted to be extremely conservative. So at mid-year, you will see us make a mid-year adjustment to compensate for those revenues. As I mentioned before, this new agreement is going to apply to all properties that have been annexed since the nineteen ninety-six agreement. The county is going to continue to retain the base tax revenue, but then the increment, increment, instead of being shared thirty-seventy, is now going to be shared fifty-fifty. Future annexed properties will be subject to the same agreement unless we specifically negotiate a separate agreement with the county. And sometimes you may want to consider that in the event that there are additional services or services over and above that the city would need to offer to residents within those annexed areas that were previously provided by the county. And then, of course, the revenue, as I showed in the representation before, is calculated prior to any ERAF shift that must be allocated. So let me walk you through what it would look like with this new agreement. So once again, we'll have ten thousand dollars in revenue based off a one million dollar increment that was experienced. So the city still collects three point eight percent of that. The county still collects twenty-seven point four. But now, the county is going to shift fifty percent of their revenues to us. So that's going to be an additional thirteen hundred, almost fourteen hundred dollars that will come to the city. That takes us from three hundred and seventy-eight initially to seventeen hundred forty-seven dollars. The county will still need to do their ERAF shift of fifty-four point nine, and our portion of twenty-seven point six. Those allocations have not changed. And so I'll deduct four hundred and eighty-two dollars from that seventeen hundred dollars that is now allocated to the city. And at the end of the day, we end up with twelve hundred sixty-five dollars, while the county ends up with six hundred and seventeen. So it ends up being twelve point six percent to the city and six point two percent to the county. And then this final figure sort of gives you a consolidated view that with the seventy-thirty agreement that was previously in effect with, under the nineteen ninety-six agreement, the county ended up with about forty-nine point nine percent, or eight hundred and sixty-four dollars. And the city ended up with fifty point one, or eight hundred and sixty-nine, which was a total of seventeen hundred dollars divided between the two. Under this new agreement, because the county is now allocating less funds to ERAF because they've shifted a portion of that to the city who pays less ERA percentages, we actually end up with eighteen hundred dollars versus seventeen hundred dollars that now stays in our local community. So thirty-two point eight percent of that goes to the county, and then the city ends up with sixty-seven point two percent of that. So you'll notice, although our allocations are fifty-fifty, post, you know, pre-ERAF, at the end of the day, we end up with about sixty-seven percent of the revenues. And so our recommendation tonight is the approval of this master tax property sharing agreement, and then asking for your authorization so that I can finalize the maps and the attachments to the agreement, as well as executed once the county CEO's office has finalized those. And I'm available for any questions.
The Army ammunition base you have colored in, we're collecting no revenues on that still, which has zero value. So there is no base for the county. So when we get that, that's going to be a windfall.
You are correct, Mayor.
I'd just like to take a moment to thank the mayor. I know that this was very tedious, working with the county supervisors, because they really don't like to give up any of their money. But I've been in Santa Claus County since nineteen sixty-two, and back then, there were more people living in the county than there were the cities. Not flip-flop. Now there are more people in the cities than the county. So I'm very pleased that this step is happening, because the cities need this money, because they have more people in there than the counties do now. Thank you very much, Mayor.
Yeah, I just want to give kudos to the mayor and our previous city manager, Sean Scully, for starting this years ago, getting the ball rolling. It's been, and it's funny, because as Maricela was saying, long time coming. I literally was writing, "long time coming," and I underscored it four times, because it has been, it has been some time. But it's the right thing to do. I'm glad the county saw it the same way, and more money staying locally, which is a more benefit to all of us. So, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any comments from the public?
Mayor and council, if I could, I usually don't butt in on policy matters, but I just want to recognize, the mayor wasn't just one of the mayors who worked with the county on this. The mayor universally recognizes the driving force in the county to get this agreement. So I just wanted to add that to something I don't usually do, but Mayor, great job.
Thank you very much. Okay, a little more history. It started in two thousand thirteen under Jill, but it was Sean, change of CEO for the county. Sean and Maricela and I sitting down with the new CEO, Jody Hayes. And every time we started talking, we had a new crisis, whether it was homeless, it was COVID, it was, you're not going to get free votes out of this from the county supervisors. So we went through the county supervisors. But I want to thank Maricela and Sean for being the driving factors. I had to herd the cat, and they had to herd the CEO. So thank you very much. So I want to bring it back out to the public for any comments. Any comments in Zoom?
No, there are not.
Quiet tonight. I bring it back for a, to the council for consideration.
That's the mayor. I make a motion, we approve item eleven point six.
And I'll second it.
Do I have someone?
Excuse me, Mayor. Yes, there is a lady in the audience that has a question.
Now, on ten-one of the general.
We're way past that, I'm sorry.
Okay, right. But I just had a quick question, because it says that the city staff discovered a public notice of regularity. So what did they discover on that property that?
We'll talk about that after. We've already passed that. Donna can explain that to you.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you. It was a noticing, I believe. Hey, I bring eleven point six back for consideration.
Make a motion, we approve item eleven point six.
And I'll second it.
A motion to approve in a second on item eleven point six. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Uribe?
Yes.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Barbara Martinez?
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Thank you all, especially that last one. Item twelve, staff comment.
Mayor, we still got seven-one.
So unfortunately, I did not hear back from Mr. Hahn, who was going to be presenting item seven point one. I did send two messages and did not receive a response back.
He has to be here to do the presentation. He's not here. I would have stopped everything for him to do the presentation. Okay. After being rudely interrupted, I am twelve-one, staff comment.
So Mayor, sorry, I just received a message back from him. and we will be rescheduling at a later point in time. Uh, so first of all, on behalf of the city and of all of the staff, I want to thank our interim city clerk, Kathy Tixera. Thank you so much for all of your hard work. Um, Kathy's appointment ends this Thursday, June thirtieth. Um, when we were interviewing her, when Cheryl and I sat down to interview her, I don't think we realized what, um, how immense the help that we needed, um, the professionalism that she brought within these few couple of months, um, and the fact that she was just able to so easily bring in new processes um, that were necessary to make sure that, um, our city clerk role continues, um, past her, her tenure here with us, um, and that we continue to provide the best of service, um, not only to the city council, but to our city residents. Um, so very appreciative of Kathy, and we thank her so much for taking a little bit of time from her retirement to come out and assist us, um, in the manner that she did. So thank you so much, Kathy.
Can we applaud? Because she did an awesome job. Thank you. Thank you, everybody. It has been my absolute pleasure to work with the city employees and the city council. It was well worth coming out of retirement for, so thank you.
Thank you very much.
And so with that, we make our official announcement, even though it was made, um, previously, that Gabby Hernandez will be taking over as the city clerk, um, for the city of Riverbank. So we look forward to working with her and sitting next to her here at the dais.
Thank you. Good job, Gabby.
Welcome.
I also want to say a huge thank you to all of the sponsors for our car show and picnic. Much appreciated. We know that it was a hot day, but we thank everybody who came out to join us. Um, the picnic was delicious for those who got to enjoy the free tri-tip sandwiches and the hot dogs, and then, of course, the music and the cars were just absolutely wonderful. And thank you to, um, the Central Valley Community Resources for offering, uh, their beer and wine garden. I know a, a few of us were able to take advantage of that, so, thank you very much. And then Chief Ridenhour will be coming up to the podium to discuss, um, some of our efforts, uh, to combat this upcoming Fourth of July and fireworks.
Good evening, Mayor and council. I wanted to take the opportunity to, um, inform the council and the public about our plans for the Fourth of July. As you know, we're coming to this season where we get a lot of illegal firework activity. We're already starting to see some around town. But I kind of want to remind everybody that anything that explodes or leaves the ground is illegal, and the city of Riverbank has an ordinance in place, which is a thousand dollar violation uh, for the first offense, and then goes up from there. Uh, this weekend, we're going to have several extra patrols throughout the weekend, specifically targeting illegal firework activity. We're going to be identifying those that are doing the illegal activity, and then we'll be receiving citations, um, for those, for that illegal activity. Uh, one thing that's new this year, I just got it up and running today. I was, I'm very pleased to pronounce that, um, the NAILa map, and if you haven't heard about the NAILa map, it's a free application you can download to your, to your mobile device. It could be on Apple, or it could be on, uh, Android as well. It's free to use, and it allows you to, uh, notify us through an application of illegal firework activity. It's very easy to use, like I said. You can take a picture of the activity, it'll ask you the location. You can even pick it on a map and, and pinpoint where it's down. It'll ask you a question, is this in the general vicinity? Is it exactly where it's happening at? You answer those questions. It has a place to put notes, where you can put detailed notes about what you saw. You know, you may even identify the person, whether or not you want to be contacted with the information. And then from there, you basically click submit, and then it notifies us through an, an email notification. And what we're going to do all those nights is we're going to have, um, those emails forwarded to our shift supervisor that, that evening, and as the time permits between calls, that we will be responding to those as well. And another great thing about the application at the end, it shows us a map of the city afterwards of where this activity occurred at and where the reports came from. So it's something we can share back with the public afterwards, um, as a general idea of how many calls, how successful this app was. And we're going to be promoting that, starting tomorrow, through our social media, um, campaigns, both at the sheriff's office and, and also through the city of Riverbank. We'll be sharing those all through the different neighborhood groups in town. So I'm hoping that'll be a big help this year. We do ask the public, though, if you see illegal firework activity, do not call nine-one-one. Um, nine-one-one is for, uh, for emergencies, obviously those are busy evenings for us. So please call a non-emergency number. The number for that is two oh nine, five five two, two four seven two. But again, try to use the application. I think it's going to be a lot easier, you'll have less wait time than you would if you called a non-emergency number, and I think you'll get, um, a better, uh, product, product out of it at the end. So that's what we have planned for the weekend.
Can we have a link to that app?
Yeah, could you spell it, um?
Yeah, it's, so it's two, NAILa, N-A-I-L, and then there's E-M.
Naila?
Yeah, Naila.
Oh.
Yeah, the mayor likes it.
Naila, I like it.
Please, I have, I have. So actually, you know, the interesting part, I was kind of curious, like, how this was set in. It's actually funded by TNT Fireworks. It's part of their campaign to help reduce the illegal, um, fireworks.
Increase themselves or decrease the illegal.
I have a question. So what about the loud booms that you hear at two, three, four o'clock in the morning?
You know, that's actually one of the, um, the prompts to ask you on there, okay, is this an illegal, um, activity you see leaving the ground, or is it a loud noise? And you also have the ability to record the noise on the application as well, and it'll send that information to us.
Okay, good to know.
Yeah, something exploding is obviously illegal.
Yeah, it makes a lot of noise, scares everybody.
I have a question, um, are you done?
Mm-hmm.
I have a question, quick question. Last year, when I went, um, attended on, uh, the Fourth of July with one of your officers, we had a lot of problems in the cul-de-sacs with illegal parking. I mean, they were stacked up two or three back, and the problem is, a fire engine couldn't get in there. And so are you going to cite this year if they are doing that, or just warn them to get done, or what?
Yeah, we're always, we try to go compliance first, to try to get people to just move their cars by it. If we have to, um, we'll have to go that route, if we have to, unfortunately, go that way. I've been working closely with the fire chief as well, and, and communication with him, and there, and there are efforts that are going to be out that evening as well.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
And that is all for staff comment.
Very good. Councilmember Hernandez?
Um, I don't have any comments other than saying thank you to Gabby and city staff for the picnic and car show. Um, Gabby Pregel has it running smooth, and, um, it was fun to help come set up and, and, uh, see the rest of the show.
Thank you, councilmember Uribe.
Thank you, Mayor, and, uh, I apologize for rudely interrupting you on that last comment. Uh, we did have some residents here, and since it was on the agenda, I just wanted to, if there was a process there, to kind of give them the opportunity to kind of, uh, say a few things. Uh, I'll be doing a meet and greet, um, as the pastor stated earlier. Uh, it's just a, a opportunity for residents to come and share concerns, share ideas with, uh, with myself, uh, trying to be accessible to the, to the community. And also, we have a brand-new city manager, Maricela, so I invited her as well, uh, to kind of join me in that. So it's going to be Thursday, eight, uh, eight forty-five in the morning. It's going to be at Perco, so please join us, uh, this Thursday. Uh, second, I'll be attending a briefing on some priority bills through the Assembly and the Senate, uh, held through the League. Uh, and I want to just briefly applaud this, the, the State Assembly and the State Senate for passing, uh, the SAA, STA-ten, uh, which will go to the voters in November. Uh, it's going to be a constitutional amendment, making it a right to abortion and contraceptives. Uh, me personally, I believe healthcare is a right, so I'll be supporting that. Uh, and then our very own, uh, John Dinen on Planning Commission, uh, was appointed to California Senior, Senior Legislative Assemblyman. So if you see him, congratulate him, and that's all I have, thank you.
Councilmember Barbara Martinez?
Um, well, I'm kind of disappointed that Brad was not here to give our, give us information about the regional homeless plan. I'm very excited to hear about it because I think that, um, the whole plan, uh, since we want to do this regionally instead of cities doing their own homeless, uh, plan, I think it's going to be very good, and I'm excited about the objectives that it has and the proposed outcome. Um, so I attended, along with councilmember Hernandez, the Growth Prosperity Inclusion, which is, um, an economic plan of where, um, we as a community in Stanislaus County, how we want to, what we, what we want to look like in, uh, twenty thirty. And there were a lot of good information, um, just talking about economic prosperity and, um, giving out plans of action. We all had, uh, a chance to give our, our support by giving information, suggestions, on how we can improve, what's going on currently right now, and what we need to take a, another look at. Um, Safe and Same fireworks start, sales started today. Um, let's see, uh, July thirteenth is going to be our Kids' Health and Safety Annual Fun Fair, Bike and Rodeo. The location has changed due to resurfacing of Santa Fe Street, so it'll be right out front here. And the time is five-thirty to eight PM. Um, and then wanted to thank councilmember Hernandez for helping us at the, uh, the car show and, uh, beer and wine garden, so, thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
I'd just like to take a few minutes to thank all the people that were on the committee that arranged to have the centennial affairs that we've had so far. They've all been very successful. The car show, there were fifty-five cars, and our city fire engine came in third place, believe it or not. The old fire engine has bested the show for third place. That was kind of neat. But they've been very good, and, uh, there's just going to be one more coming up toward the end of the month of August, and I hope everybody can attend it. It's been a lot of fun, and, and I, I want to see if we can get more to attend it by advertising it more, maybe we get the chamber to give the, give it out to the businesses and whatnot. But they've been fantastic, and the committee has done a great job, and the city employees have done a great job in keeping things going, along with Gabby. Driving them well. Thank you, Gabby.
Thank you. Uh, we received the, uh, Grand Jerry Report where we have to comment on certain items. There's, I believe, nine, uh, specific items that we have to comment on, on our homeless. And I believe that we're probably the only city that can be positive throughout the entire one. Uh, there's one thing that we don't do, though, we won't warehouse people. Well, that's not our goal, is warehousing. But we will, uh, assist anyone who needs it, provide them training, get them temporary housing while they're transitioning. Uh, so that is going to be a positive comment for us, uh, going on out. Stanislaus Regional Transit Authority will be here in Riverbank, I believe it's on the thirteenth, at the Scout Hall. They say it's the senior center, but it's not. It's a, um, and, and they're, what they're doing is looking at route changes, and they're looking for public input, uh, for those. So we need to get the word out, whether I got the right data or not, uh, I'm, I'm close. So let's get the word out and put it on our signs so we can have, uh, maximum participation. And that, this is one that you can actually affect where that bus is going to stop, if you can give your input. Uh, this is, uh, interactive, and if Riverbank wants more, uh, bus stops, this is the time to, uh, to reach out. I had the opportunity to go to the Pentagon and talk to the Secretary of the Army, who was conveniently absent. Um, and so we discussed exactly where we were in the, uh, transition or the conveyance of the ammo base. And I read my letter to, uh, um, Secretary Kramer from twenty nineteen, and I could write that letter again without changing a word to where we are today. But they have a plan that, for conveyance, just like they've had every year. So this is going to be April of next year, firm date sometime in April, that will have the, um, um, conveyance. I was there with, uh, Eric McAfee from Admetis, and we're going to make a trip back to the US EPA because Region Nine is not playing. Uh, they are dictating, and, um, they're trying to make the Army do a, be a land use authority, um, and they're trying to have the Army take over personal property. I don't think we do that unless it's in war and it's in a foreign country. We don't do it in our own country. Uh, so, um, uh, one of the residence, residency, or the, uh, laid-backness of the U, uh, Region Nine is kind of disappointing because we could do a carbon capture now, which is all set to go, which will alleviate most of the pollutants in our immediate area and, uh, alleviate some of the environmental, uh, justice concerns that are out there. And, um, that's why we are going to go to the US EPA and say, hey, this doesn't make sense. Can you help us? So, um, for that, I hope that we can, um, move forward, uh, with the, the conveyance, and we're going to push it on our own end, uh, since the Army Secretary works for the Secretary of Defense, and he wants us to build that ethanol plant for sustainable aviation fuel. Um, so we'll go to him, so he can tell the Secretary of the Army that this is a good thing, move it along. Thank God I'm not shy. Okay, for now, we can go into closed session, consistent with item thirteen point one, Conference of Real Property Negotiators, pursuant to Government Code, Section five four nine five six point eight. Property sixty-four thirty-six Oakdale Road, Riverbank, APN zero seven five dash zero two six dash zero four zero. Agency negotiator, city manager, Maricela Garcia. Property negotiator, High Price, Lefler and Associates. Under negotiation price, term of payments, or both. Uh, with that, uh, we will be going into closed session. Before we do, anyone from the public can comment on this closed session item before we go into closed session. Anyone for, uh, comments from the public or from Zoom?
There's no one from Zoom.
Well, now, we convene, uh, we, um, adjourn to closed session.
Chella, what you here for?
Chella, what you here for? The City Council LRA Board meetings are reconvened from closed session. Item 14.1, report from closed session on item 13.1, conference with real property negotiators direction has been provided to staff. Our next city council meeting is canceled for the follow-on on, uh, July 26th, 2022 at 6:00 PM here. This meeting is now adjourned.